All right, let's, we have a quorum, so let's convene the Brattleboro Planning Commission meeting of September 4th around 6:00 PM. Let's just review and approve the minutes of last meeting. August 5th was the meeting. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Thank you, Bonnie. Is there a second? I'll second. The only thing I caught is the date.
Yeah, I just caught that.
So July 1st, August 5th. Anyone else? Issues with the minutes? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand and keep it raised. That's Sarah, Lindsay, myself, John, and Bonnie. Okay. Are there any announcements?
I sent something to you today.
Oh, I didn't get a chance to look. I looked at it enough to see that it seemed like it wasn't about this meeting, I thought.
Oh, well, if you don't mind, I'm going to find it.
Okay.
Just because I think it is time sensitive.
Oh.
And then I can send it out. Now I have to find it.
I forget.
Do you know if there's, with the Canal Street Corridor project, do you know if there's an upcoming scheduled, another public interaction? Or Sue, if you can multitask?
I can respond to that. Okay. Okay, so the first announcement is that BDCC is working on a first giraffe, sorry, I'm trying to scan this quickly. They're working on the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy for the Southern Vermont Zone, which is Wyndham and Bennington Counties. They are working with Camoin Associates and they are going to have several public input meetings coming up. And I will send this around to you, but they're looking, the ones that are in the area are Thursday, September 26th at 8:00 AM in Wilmington, 12:00 noon in Brattleboro, and 6:00 PM in Bellows Falls. And then on Monday, September 30th, there is a virtual meeting. They're asking for RSVPs. And so the point of these meetings is to review and discuss the proposed SEDS plan, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Plan. So they had asked, they sent it to the town of Brattleboro, they asked that we share it with all our boards and committees, so.
Did you email that just to me or other commissioners?
Just to you, because I didn't know if you'd want to make the announcement, and now I'll send it to everybody.
Oh, so you will send it to all of us?
I will send it to.
Also, I'd like to.
And I guess, yeah, the notice will say everything that anyone who's curious about, I guess.
Yeah, I can't really answer questions about it at this time. I know that they did have a change in consultant, and they're working with Camoin Associates, who actually is the firm that worked on our housing study several years ago. So, good. Yeah.
There's no questions about that. How about the Canal Street?
Yeah, so the announcement there is our consultants, this is the Canal Street Corridor Study. The consultants have been working this summer, working on concepts. We have a steering committee meeting later this month. What's the date? I think it's September 25th. Sarah, do you recall? What I sent?
September 24th.
September 24th, thanks. So that's going to be a steering committee meeting where we're going to kind of provide feedback on the different concepts and then review a presentation for a public meeting that we're scheduling for October?
17.
Thursday, October 17th, and that will be an in-person meeting. I don't have the location yet, but that will be for the public to review the concepts and provide feedback. And then after that, I'll probably do some more targeted outreach to groups in the quarter, like at Red Clover Commons and maybe tabling at Foodworks and different locations to get other feedback from people. So those are the upcoming meetings on that project.
Anything else from anyone? Or announcements?
Just a question, are those dates going to be sent around as well?
I can send those dates. Not that the steering committees invite only, but I'll send around to public meeting. Yep.
That would be great, thank you.
You can do that. Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to a follow-up or continuation, so to speak, of last meeting's topic about a request for land use reg amendment. Staff did some more look into this, as the commission requested, and.
That's in regards to the development?
Yeah, they were asking to be upzoned. This memo, as you all have seen, you know, kind of has evolved into be about more than just their request.
So you may recall, World Learning sent a request to the Planning Commission to consider an upzone. They have two parcels of land that they were interested in pursuing housing development on and had been speaking to some developers. Those two parcels of land are zoned rural residential that has a density of one unit per one and a half acres. They also, one of them is directly served by water and sewer. The other one has water and sewer in Black Mountain Road. And so this, in July, a new, some clarifications to state, to some of the legislation came into effect, one of which is if you have water and sewer, you must have a minimum density of one unit per five acres. So we are not in compliance. I did meet with the town attorney on that.
Five units per what?
Oh, five units per one acre. Sorry, thank you. So anyway, so we're not in compliance with that, and that means that the state law controls at this point. And so I did advise World Learning that they were, you know, that we're not in compliance with state law, and technically, they do have this one, five units per one acre that controls as long as, you know, they can get sufficient water and sewer to the project. And it does leave us in a position where there are a couple of areas of town that we, that are not in compliance. So what I laid forth in this memo to you is a couple of options. I would say, you know, there's the do nothing option, which is not ideal. On a couple of friends, first of all, it requires staff to constantly remember, I mean, I think, I'm not so concerned about that part, but we're going to need to remember when somebody calls and asks about that, that they really do are allowed to have a higher density. But I think the real disadvantage of that is that sometimes people are looking at properties either for sale and, or they're just kind of scouting the town and they're not going to know, because our regulations are not in compliance with state law. So I think that's the biggest disadvantage. So I don't really favor a do nothing approach. A second is that we could consider upzoning it to a residential neighborhood zoning district. It would be an amendment, so that's, that's a bit of a process and, but we would remap all the areas that are subject to this. I can show you those. We could create, as I talk about in the memo, you know, if somebody chose not to bring water and sewer into their development, we could maybe create a different, we could still upzone it RN, but we could, you know, have it as unsuared and unwatered or whatever, no utilities, and then keep it at a lower density if we wanted to do something like that. Do, I can take a question now.
What does state law say about property that is eligible to be five per acre, but you decide not to hook water? Does that, is it still allow, I would think the zoning would still be the zone?
Yes.
Okay.
So if they're not on water and sewer, then the five unit per acre is not, not required?
If a connection's not available?
Yeah.
Connection's not available, correct.
Is it available or actually connected?
It's available.
So if it's available, even if it's not connected, then they are five per acre? Is that, was that your question too?
No.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead then. I apologize. That's where I was confused.
So the definition of available, it's, I mean, it is, it is right there. They would have to bring it into the site, but it's in the road right next to the parcel, so that, that kind of meets that it's available. The next level, they could bring it into the site, can they engineer it to actually get what they need there? So under this proposal of having like a third type of residential neighborhood where there's no utilities, if they actually couldn't make it work on site, whatever, they don't want to spend the money, or it's too difficult, you know, there might be physical constraints that make it not possible, then, you know, it would stay at a lower density. We only have to do the five units per acre if it's got the water and sewer.
I'm actually unclear about what you're suggesting as an option for how residential neighborhood unserved by water and sewer, which parcels that would apply to? Are you saying like all the rural residential parcels?
No.
Currently that don't have?
The ones that have water and sewer in the road.
Why would they be called unserved? The connection's available.
The connection's available, correct.
Yeah.
But getting it onsite could be, if they found it to be cost prohibitive, if they didn't want to bring it onsite, if they, you know, if there were physical constraints that actually maybe, so a lot of times, if there's uphill, they might need a forced main or something like that.
Violates the state law, though? I mean, isn't the state law that if the, if the services are available, the property must be zoned five per acre?
Yeah, it doesn't take into account like actually, the actual.
I mean, I couldn't just choose, well, I'm not, I don't want to pay that, so it's going to be one per 1.5 acre, right? I mean.
Right now in town, we don't have a requirement that you connect to the water and the sewer. So, you know, somebody could choose to develop a property and not connect, and that doesn't generally happen, but if they found it too expensive to actually connect, then, you know, do, we only have to give them the, the five units per acre if they're on water and sewer.
I apologize, Sue. I'm probably, maybe this should be tabled offline or something, because I'm clearly confused. My understanding is that the state law, as you stated, it was that if connection is available, whether you choose to use it or not, property must be zoned five per acre. And that state law, and that supersedes whatever town law there is. And if that's the case, then it doesn't matter whether I choose, whether or not I want to hook it up or not, the property is zoned five per acre. Now, I, I mean, the whole point of the, the state law, to my, you know, novice's understanding would be, if you're hooked to city services, they want density. So it seems to defeat that purpose to say, well, I'm not going to hook to city services, and I'm going to keep at the 1.5, one per 1.5 acre, which would be violating the, if not the legality of law.
I hear what you're saying. I probably need to investigate that further.
It's a legitimate question. I mean, I don't want to send you off.
No, 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 I understand what you're saying. If the intent to state, I mean, state law says it's where connection is available. We're saying it's available there, but then I'm saying, well, but if they're not going to connect to it, they can't have it, there could be a conflict with the state law. So I hear what you're saying.
Do you think, given that the state does the septic permits, that the potential for issues there is limited, because they would still need to be ultimately approving that you had five plus units per acre? Hypothetically, if, if what you're saying is, is true, that they would still be able to have that level of density with or without connecting? If they were going to do some sort of community septic with that level of density, it would have to pass the state's requirements for a septic system to actually be able to move forward. So I don't think that would be economic, but I'm not the expert on that, so I suppose we can just trust the state to be able to regulate that.
Well, as you research this, though, for my benefit at least, if you would also research the fact that, I don't think it's a matter of choice. My, you know, my understanding, trying to interpret the law, is that the state requires you to zone five units per acre because they want the density. I don't give a damn what the town wants.
So I don't think they require that the town zones it that way. I think it's best practice, which is, I believe, what, what we're saying in this memo, but if a, an application comes in and you have not changed your zoning to reflect that, it will be superseded by the fact that the state preempts that local zoning and says, this is allowed. I think it also hinges on what the word available means in that regard. So it seems plausible to say that if you've got a hundred acre parcel and you've got water and sewer in the road, but it goes way far back, that water and sewer is available on part of the parcel, but on the other side of the parcel, that's, you know, perhaps more than a thousand feet away from the road, or even further, maybe that's not available anymore, unless they're going to actually extend into their parcel to do that development.
I'm certainly no land use expert, but I must admit, I'm confused. To me, the law, the state superseded law is quite clear, that it must be zoned five per acre. Period.
We can look into that. I mean, and talk about that with the town attorney. I mean, I think, I mean, it's, you know, I, I think some form of upzoning is the way to do it. So maybe it's a combination of two, and then three, which I lay out here, is actually establishing, establishing a water and a sewer district for the town, not a district, like boundaries.
As you said, if the zoning doesn't match the state law, doesn't that put the town at some legal risk? Because a developer could come in and say, wow, I thought this was zoned at 1.5, the numbers didn't pencil at that zoning, I could have zoned it at five to one, right?
Developed it, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, developed it at five to one. And this, the city knew that I could have developed it at five to one and deliberately left it at one to 1.5, because it wasn't cooked up. Sorry for the air quotes, I hate that shit.
It's an interesting question about if, in other cases too, when, when state law supersedes the land use regs, like, is there, maybe some of these updates, they say, update your land use, municipal land use regs ASAP or by a date, and other times, maybe they don't even have a date, and it's just best practice to do so?
Yeah.
Maybe an oversight with the state law, where they didn't say everyone has an obligation to update your regs by?
Yeah, but certainly state law is going to enforce it if they ever got, if it ever got elevated to state law, right?
Yeah, supersede it.
I'm just thinking, good general practice to update the town regs to whatever the state law is, whatever, you know, it's interpreted as.
The only, the only reason I, or potential reason I see maybe not to, is if in the water and sewer district, or sorry, water and sewer ordinance, it can say, connections cannot be made in these certain areas, with rationale or not. Is that, that's a question?
Interesting.
Because if, you know, if the town plan and the public or whatever says like, no, we want to keep this area, you know, open space and farmland enforced, I'm not just talking about this area, but other areas, and water and sewer goes through it, but to get to a big, developed, you know, college, then now because this law is taking control out of the municipality and saying, you have to have this minimum here, but it does speak a little bit to the water and sewer ordinance, and it's, I think it speaks to it as far as the sewer, the district limits, so that way, you know, but can it also speak to saying, as the sewer pipe goes along this road or under this road, between this point and this point, connections shall not be made?
Potentially.
Yeah. So that's a factor to consider, too.
All I know is if I was a developer and this, I thought the town was playing some tricks to prevent me from five per acre?
Yeah.
It'd be lawsuit.
Yeah.
Now, you guys probably don't do it the same way here, but that would be the way it would be handled in Phoenix. And why go through it, is my point?
Yeah.
If you're not going to win it.
Well, I mean, I think, I think that some of these areas probably deserve some consideration. I know we've considered these areas in the past. I mean, our zoning districts, particularly our RN, was, you know, pretty much drawn by the boundaries of the water and sewer lines. The areas, I just wanted to show that, you know, are.
Sue, do you want to just touch on the last part of the memo? And then we'll continue with, with this open, open back and forth.
Sure. So the, the last option, we thought that, you know, perhaps we could work with the Public Works Department and adopt some ordinance amendments that, you know, could put a boundary on our water and sewer lines. Right now, we don't have a boundary, so, you know, that's the potential to cause sprawl. So under the state law, every time, you know, if, if the sewer water line and water line were extended, then that opens up new areas to this district, or to the, to these state regulations. So we felt like it would be appropriate to actually try to work with them to draw a boundary on where we would extend water and sewer, unless there was some, you know, compelling environmental situation that needed to be addressed. So, you know, I can show you a map right now.
Yeah, I just thought since, or I think, that was just, since this law and the implications of it hinge upon the water and sewer area, that's, we should make sure we focus on that or have an understanding of that in this discussion.
It's hard, I have to kind of get in tight for you to see it. So the green is the sewer system, the blue is the water system, water network, so.
We mentioned also that there are definitely some updates that have happened to our systems since this mapping that aren't shown here, so it is a bit more extensive than this, but we need to work with DPW to get that full data and be able to map it out.
So this is going to get a little bit messy, but I'm going to show you this area that's down off of Old Guilford Road. So I'm going to put the zoning district. So you can ignore the purple areas, that's our industrial zoning district. We don't allow residential, so the state law doesn't apply here, but this green area here has water and sewer in, in Old Guilford Road. So this is an area basically from the intersection of South Main all the way down to the Vernon Line, that, you know, is, is an area that we should be looking at. It's already extended down there, it's the way it goes to get to the Guilford, the, the rest area on 91. So that's one area.
There's that one that's right across the highway.
Oh, yeah, there's, this is, there's a little, this Goldfinch Lane here, if you can see that, that's a little residential, rural residential area here. There's kind of a parcel right here on Goldfinch, Goldfinch Lane, that's residential, that actually has water and sewer connection. The entire street doesn't, but, you know, it might make sense that if you were drawing a boundary on the water and sewer, that, you know, having it come down Goldfinch Lane and serving these houses could be reasonable.
Believe it's the case, too, that one of the things that's been updated that we don't have is that there is, I believe, both water and sewer going into the Delta Campus that does cross over at least one.
Oh, yes, that is true.
Fairly large parcel there of RN.
Yeah.
Their rural residential.
Yeah. And then there are a couple parcels here in, on the edge here, if you can see this big parcel right here where my cursor is. This is, just make sure I'm in the right place. Nope, I'm not. It's east of the highway here. This is, got water and sewer, if you can see it faintly in here. This actually is a conserved parcel, and there's a couple like that around where it's, you know, some sort of conservation land. This is, there's one up here near Meadow Brook, this is conserved by Vermont Land Trust, so got to look into those, whether or not we need to change the zoning when there's easements in place. We might have to. And then our, kind of, there's a parcel or two along Route 30. You can see the land, the lines extend up here, water goes a little bit further, and then we have the Black Mountain area that we've been talking about. There's some sewer that's extended beyond, but the water is in Black Mountain Road and then Kipling and into the S2 campus.
For this law?
It has to be both.
Can you toggle those districts back on for this?
Yeah, so the yellow is, is the institutional district, but that does allow residential, so, and then the light green is the rural residential. Yeah.
I don't necessarily rattle, but how, how does the town then manage sewer and water capacity?
Through Department of Public Works, so.
No, I'm sorry. I, I mean, how do you decide whether you're going to extend it, extend it or not? If, if there's no limits on it, theoretically, you just continue to grow and grow and grow until you don't have any more capacity, which would be?
That'd be a good question for Public Works. I'm not sure how they've managed that in the past. We haven't had a lot of lines extended. I think that the Delta Campus is probably one of the most recent Black Mountain Estates, you know, oftentimes we look at, I think they're looking at capacity and they're looking at, can the system handle it? So for example, Black Mountain, that whole part of town had a new pump house recently, so the system can handle it, there is capacity, and then it's about the developer making the connection.
So Sue, do you think or know if the land use regs themselves or any other bylaw under the Planning Commission's control, I know it's a select board's control, but that goes through us as part of the process, can make decisions on the water and sewer district boundaries? Or is that, there's no way know-how that the Planning Commission can actually have authority over that? And it is just the select board, you know, through DPW's advisement, adopting, you know, amending the water and sewer district? I know that they'll be receptive to our and Planning Department's perspectives, but could it, could any of this language actually be in the land use regs?
I don't believe so.
Right.
I know, it's not our, not the Planning Commission's authority.
Right. But, okay, and so hearing that, now though, there's, you know, development and land use implications forced on us by the, by the state. So I absolutely think, I agree with number three, we should look into that. And, I mean, our land use regs and our town plans speak a lot about compact development and not extending growth, getting denser within the walkable areas and where infrastructure is. So it seems to me that this is something that we should, not just water down our, you know, our, our goals, but should, should reinforce them or align with them.
Philosophically, I agree with zoning five to one.
Yeah.
But it, I, I think the other issue for me is, there's some questions, at least from my perspective, on what the state law forces us into and what potential problems it creates by this requiring, you know, if you can connect to water, you must own it five to one. Is it, is it really must? Is there any limits that, you know, sewer capacity and/or water capacity can put on that five to one zoning, you know?
Right.
Yeah, it says, does not require connection where prohibited by state regulation or permit and identified capacity constraint, intermunicipal agreement, or excluded by local ordinance or bylaw.
That, that last part, excluded by local ordinance slash bylaw. I mean, it almost seems to me that a local ordinance slash bylaw could just
Kind of catch all.
Overrule their, their statute. And I'm not necessarily advocating for that or not, but, I mean, it, it almost seems like that could just.
Anyway, if, if I was going to suggest a direction, I would suggest that I agree with Sue. I think more work needs to be done on clarifying the implications of this state requirement to zone five to one if you're accessible for water and sewer. And there might be some particular questions, which we've discussed, you know, in regards to, what impact does capacity and water and sewer have on it? And how could we circumvent it if we so choose?
Yeah. And I'll say generally, although
Reasonably circumvent.
Still wanting to know those specifics. I think that, and I think I already said it, but just to sum up, that I think that the water and sewer zone or district or limits should harmonize with our, our land use regs, you know, and our town plan.
True, too.
And I think
Shoot, what was the other thing?
In, in it being a housing crisis and whatnot, I, you know, I think I'm leaning more towards where there already is water and sewer. Okay, fine, let's make it easier for people to, to build because Okay, fine. Let's make it easier for people to, to build because there's capacity there. However, I would like to know when the, with the previous town plan, when the public weighed in um, and decided the future land use map and thought some of these areas should stay rural. You know, how, and, and that could be interesting to find out in this new town plan too. Do people want to expand certain areas for housing or do they want to preserve?
So not to get into the next section before we finish this one, but I think that what, what Sue's going to discuss when we talk about next month's meeting is relevant to that. And, and we can go into it more deeply because I think that's a very good point, actually.
So I think maybe unless, unless we or I or however many people have that concern, um, unless it gets resolved somehow soon, um, I know finishing the town plan is a ways away. May 2026, but maybe maybe this would align with that, although I know that's, that's a ways away, but.
But do you think there's another question though, and you brought it up, and that was, there are pieces of land that technically fit under that state's requirement to zone five to one that have conservation easements on them? And what is the, what's the interaction between those two potentially competing tensions, right? Okay.
I don't personally see there being one. I think the concept, I'm not an attorney, you know, and I don't know this, but I, I would think the conservation easement would just bar anything that's not in the easement, you know? Um, I think though, in some cases, it's maybe good to reflect in the regs and in the reg, the district map, what is the like reality and feasibility? Right? Like sometimes haven't we zoned certain things rural, residential or rural because, just because the slopes are really steep or something and or there's been certain things where like.
Something we consider.
Yeah, it could, okay.
When looking at it.
Where it could be in, in a, up, in a developed district, but then because of the constraints that we knew about, we're just like, well, let's just not even include it in that. Maybe it was just talked about. I guess wasn't a conclusive authoritative answer. So I don't, I don't know the proper path either.
I just, I just hate to have the town put in a difficult legal position because the state decided, you know, to put something out there without necessarily thinking through all the potential interactions and consequences. Yeah.
I don't want to speak for the legislators, but the reason this came into effect is because lots of towns have very exclusionary zoning. Brattleboro is not one of them, but it's really, you know, it was to kind of say, you know, you've got water and sewer and you can take more housing density than your one unit per acre that's going on.
To hold all, all, all towns to a, a, a base minimum to do their part.
Yep.
Hmm. So allow their.
You know, we had these couple areas of Brattleboro that are in effect, but um.
That's potentially a lot of housing.
It is potentially a lot of housing and we need a lot of housing. So I mean, I think it's worth a look at.
Presumably the numbers will pencil out better at five to one than they would to one at one and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's just really interesting. It just seems like potential for problems unless it gets clarified. Really interesting.
Does anyone, any commissioners feel like we should do nothing? As far as what we clarify or what decisions, you know, we make, that's a whole different thing, but I think at least we can maybe decide that we shouldn't leave this discrepancy.
Is three the do more research one? You got option number three on the memo.
No, option number three was the
is to look.
Water and sewer ordinance.
Oh.
I mean, then there's upzoning or changing zoning in certain ways too. So.
I think option four is do more research.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I anticipated, I wasn't expecting a decision tonight because I figured there'd be questions that we need to go back and.
Yeah, I don't shut up conversation, but I would probably, if I was going to make a motion, it would be, I think that the staff needs to be recommended to go back and do more research on some of these legal issues and, and flexibility issues and then come back to us with that data. And then we can make a better decision on, for example, whether or not sewer and water connections can affect the zoning that the, that the state supersedes us with.
Mm hmm. Okay, is there, oh, Lindsay.
I'm actually mostly fine with doing nothing as far as setting this in a scheme of a priority type system where if there are other things that are more important for staff to be doing and we think that we're more, we're more or less covered by state law superseding the local law, then I wouldn't prioritize this over other things that you're doing. That's my opinion.
It seems to me that, that maybe it touches actually on, um, so Lindsay had the idea of coming up with, I'm just quickly gonna just mention skip ahead to the two agenda items, the public outreach. It would seem though, in alignment with that, that if we were to do nothing, we would at least want to send emails or letters out to all the affected property owners to say like, hey, if you're not aware of state law changes for how in promotion of housing here there.
I guess so, yeah.
Yeah.
I absolutely would because we've had conversations in the past with some property owners that are affected and not just rural learning.
All right. So we haven't even decided to, that we're not ruling out doing nothing, but more research and we'll see this again. But any, any more questions or things to look up? And so we can certainly be in touch with staff in the interim with.
It's really interesting though, dilemma.
Yeah. Um, well, the state has had some other things too, like requiring if a, if a institutional, if an institution or a facility owned by the state wants to be developed in town, then like our zoning can't prohibit that.
Yeah.
You know?
Certain site plan standards, it's.
Yeah, yeah, but, but anything that would effectively make it not happen, we can't do.
Some of this comes down to what you think of the sensibilities of the legislative. So.
Right.
I'm not surprised.
Well, then some of it's to prevent NIMBY.
Sure. Um, okay, moving on to um, our monthly update or anyway, about the 2026 town plan and um, some more data about that and previewing now what we may look at in October.
Hey Sue, do you want to preview October first since it's a really, really close segue and then we can finish with Steve's data?
I was trying to pull up the third point.
It just seems like it's so relevant to the discussion we just had.
So, um, what we talked about doing in October is digging into a little bit of the land use and um, I, I attended a conference back in May where they uh, were talking about polarity and finding both and solutions and um, really wanted to demo this activity where um, a lot of the things that we are grappling with and we will grapple with in the land use, um, you know, chapter could have both and kind of solutions. So, you know, I, I was thinking of some of the, some of the tensions that we're experiencing, like historic preservation versus individual rights, um, affordable housing and high property values. Um, you know, attracting visitors and shopping for locals, um, those kind of uh, they, they appear to be tensions, but if we kind of work through them, we maybe, you know, come to both and solutions. So we were going to kind of put these out there and kind of rapid fire go through, well, you know, what if we're over dependence on, over dependent on one side of it? Um, you know, what is, what does that look like? What are the, what are the pros of that? What are the cons of it? And then the pros and the cons of the other side and then kind of, um, you know, at least starting that as an activity that maybe it's something we want to take to the public when we're dealing with these kind of more provocative type questions.
So, so just to add on a little bit to what Sue's saying, the, the bigger picture with this is that we have to figure out a way how to get meaningful public input in a relatively small amount of time from a relatively large number of people without just saying, okay, build the town plan, right? Which is impossible for a small group, much less, you know, a large group. So in sort of talking about this kind of stuff, we said, well, maybe what we can do is instead of trying to get them to answer all the questions, we'll create some provocative questions that have a natural tension that would be of interest to them. Right? And we'll have them discuss those questions and see if we can come up with some direction slash consensus on which way to go in terms of balancing those tensions. So this exercise for October is the implementation of that kind of, is a pilot of that sort of thing in respect specifically to the kinds of issues that the planning commission would, would deal with, with, excuse me, which is land use. Right? So, so Sue and Steve and I, obviously those guys more than me are going to try and come up with some provocative questions that require the, the planning commission to discuss and balance the tension between development and preservation, as Sue said, or this and that, right? And specifically, I believe we discussed a situation very similar to, you know, how do you develop the rural areas and balance the, you know, the traditional Vermont rural areas with the, the need for more dense housing? So the bigger picture of this is we'll, we'll take how this works on a small scale with the planning commission and then look at creating those bigger tension type questions for all of the elements and sections, or at least some of the elements and sections as many as we think we can handle for, you know, the town plan overall, rather than again, trying to get, you know, town input on everything or simply asking them what their favorite words are for, you know, what Brattleboro stands for, a bunch of other things that don't necessarily, aren't necessarily useful to build in the plan or meaningful to them. That's the back. Did I miss anything?
No, you did a great job. We'd love to have an in-person meeting. I'd love to provide you with some snacks or pizza or something like that, um, if that was helpful, but I, I you know, I also understand that uh, some of you have other obligations that, um, but anyway, think about that and let me know if you think you can attend in person and.
I, I think it could be really interesting and particularly for these kinds of questions for, you know, the planning commission. So I would strongly urge you to, to attend in person if you can.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea to semi partially not serve things up to people, but um, prod them.
Just kind of framing the question.
Provoked them, frame it, give them, give them thinking, you know, disparate things on a spectrum and they may land somewhere in the middle or, or at an end. Um, I think that's a good idea.
Looking at polarities is it's not that, you know, there, there's no one right answer. And, you know, so there might be things in the town plan that we've landed on that feel like one right answer or, you know, in the land use regulations and maybe we need to look at them again.
So I think that's a good exercise and I don't know if this is germane or not, but um, with the existing town plan, um, was this, well, this is germane, but was this done for the previous town plan? And were there, just throughout the process we're going to do, are we, meaning you, because you were the only one um, of all of us present who was part of that town plan, um, public outreach process. Uh, do you recall or have notes or have a memory of?
What we did?
Yeah. And which parts were the best or most successful and what we should duplicate? Or update because people didn't have smartphones back then and maybe things are a little different.
Um, I do recall what we did and I do have notes on it, um, not kind of a, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, especially.
Lack of an article term, not a postmortem on what was effective.
Yeah, well, I'm now looking for analysis, but.
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have to. I like this proposal that you guys are suggesting, um, the bipolar exercise, but if we also know things that worked well and got good concrete conclusive public input from last time, I mean, let's inputs, let's include those.
I would say the outreach the last time was at the, you know, the, at a higher 30,000, you know, like level, you know, it's just way up there. Like, what do you like about Brattleboro? You know, what are the, what are the nice views of Brattleboro? It's not, wasn't really interacting with the, you know, the issues on the.
More like a, it was more like a sticky, you know, where, where, you know how you, where you get into these meetings where you put on sticky things and you say, okay, what's a great idea? Put it up on the board and then someone goes off into a room and aggregates them or analyzes them? Which I, I mean, a lot of people do, but I, I think we can do more.
Okay, great.
I think we can.
Yeah. And it sounds like on early in the town plan, I think it's page nine where it says, you know, as part of the public input process, the, the recurring concerns and aspirations, the top five of them, and it lists them out. It'd be interesting to know, like, should we just through, well, should we try to spell out the top five for 2026? Are we taking a different approach? Not even going to show the top five? Do we want to um, uh, hint or show people what their previous top five was and have them react to that? Or will that be too influential? We want them to start a blank slate? But, but I would like to know, like, do you still feel like these public, do you still feel like these five are priorities?
We could even do a postmortem for sorts of them, right? And say, hey, these were the five that we identified in 2013. How have we done towards them?
That was another thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I will say that from listening to Sue, who has the only real uh, organizational historical knowledge, it sounds like we have, if we do two, we have one free uh, meeting because I still don't quite understand what we got out of the second meeting, which was about sustainability. So I, I don't, I don't know if I could defend anything that was part of that meeting based on what I know.
Sorry, what are you, what are you referring to? Which meeting or?
Uh, uh, you mean for the last town plan process, we had a meeting of all boards and committees um, to talk about, I mean, it ended up being framed as, you know, what is, what is sustainability look like? What are some of the measures that, you know, the town should be taking and, and that kind of thing. But it was, um, gosh, I can't remember exactly how that came to be, but it was basically like we were asked to kind of bring all the boards and committees together and end up this conversation um, from other outside forces or other departments in town. I'd have to go back and review that one. It was a well-attended meeting, but yeah.
Is that reflected in the town plan? I only see sustainability three times in the town plan.
Uh, I honestly, I don't know.
Oh.
I mean, it was reflected in some of the actions and.
Just not that key word. Okay.
It may have been called like the all boards meeting, all boards and committees meeting. I don't really know.
It seemed to have driven any significant emphasis on sustainability.
Okay.
And certainly not metrics because there aren't many metrics.
Yeah.
Okay, data. So personally, I'd like to compliment Steve. He's really done an incredible job of digging through and actually creating his own data. And to his credit, there is an organization in town that actually asked him for his data because it's relevant to their objective and they either couldn't get it or was, was so, liked his data so much. So I, I mean, it's providing benefit, definitely.
Yeah. So, um, we've continued uh, to pull some data together, um, and you know, maybe, maybe even some feedback from the commission could be welcome. I mean, the idea was to kind of put together a couple of slides that kind of give us the current state of Brattleboro. Um, the first two that I'm going to share are some uh, police and, and crime data that had been shared this summer at different meetings. This first um, set of data or these first charts um, were from the state of Vermont. Um, they've been consulting with us on community safety. And they showed this at a July meeting. Um, it's Brattleboro compared to several, several similar city, cities and towns, um, primarily in that they're hub communities. Um, and so, you know, there's a lot of information on here. I think the key points um, for Brattleboro that they pointed out is um, you can see this trend line of calls. Um, and what he had shared there is that Brattleboro is kind of constantly having calls. Um, we don't see peaks and dips like you might see in Essex or even in Bennington. Um, you could take kind of Burlington out, obviously it's a bigger city and not necessarily um, comparable to Brattleboro, just because it is much bigger. Um, the other thing, taking Burlington out, you'll notice that we had um, a 10.1 weekly average calls. Um, so we were higher than Essex, Bennington, Barry. Um, and then the other piece of information that uh, really stood out to him is that our um, which class was it? The drugs and narcotics calls uh, for Brattleboro are a lot higher than some of the other communities.
Excuse me, that's a yellow. I'm sorry.
Uh, that's the blue. Sorry, the light blue. Yep. Um, so that's kind of Brattleboro compared to some of the other communities and what's going. So that's kind of Brattleboro compared to some of the other communities and what's going.
We don't currently have, well, we have kind of a dearth of data in the current town plan, right? I I scanned through it. I generally agree with that, but there's certainly no crime data presently. I'd say, I mean, the town plan has implications much more than just how we shake the land use regs. So there can be almost any topic maybe that has to do with the town in the town plan, and this is an important part. But I don't know, I guess it'll just be interesting, like, will this inform certain, are we going to have goals, policies and actions? Like we presently do in the town plan, and then is this gonna be part of a a public safety chapter? Or something with goals, policies and actions?
That's a good question because we've had a lot of conversations amongst the three of us, like, how far do we dig into this data? I think it's kind of, I I see two kind of points, so if you'll see it on the next slide, so some of what's happening in Brattleboro is based on policy choices that are coming from the state. And you've probably heard our select board talk about the need for revenue sharing. And so this could help build the case for revenue sharing or, you know, the situation that we're in. And then I think the other one is, you know, where are our hotspots? And so I think that could affect some land use decisions as well. So, you know, what are the amenities around there? What are, you know? So I don't see it as a separate chapter. Me personally, I see it as this is good information to know about our town and, you know, what are the things that we could be planning for it?
Yeah, we do. I think we have a subsection called public safety and there's like a little two paragraphs for the police department and some other groups.
So so one of the things we've been doing is we've been busting the data collection. I mean, any part of a strategic plan starts with a quantitation, quantitation of what the current situation is, right? But what we've been trying to do is to develop a sort of a short summary, ten slide, we've just sort of set as approximate number of this is the state of Brattleboro today. Some of which, in my opinion now, will go into the town plan and some of which is only to set the state of Brattleboro today. But it also helps develop the exercise of collecting data because I think we've developed some experience and knowledge about where to find data sources, what data sources are accurate, data sources we can use. Now, whether or not, you know, I think the ten point one number goes into the town plan is probably not known at this point, but it's certainly an important piece of data in regards to where does Brattleboro stand today? And at some point, we may want to make up a presentation of simply those sort of ten slides. This is the state of Brattleboro as we begin to discuss the town plan. Like, this is our current state. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And, you know, so this is where I I was talking about the revenue. So these are the top ten disorder locations by, hid my notes, so I apologize as I fumble through this a little bit. Oops, no, no, I'm going the wrong way. Oh, gosh, let me just get out of that second. Find my notes. Oh, great, no notes. So this was presented in an August meeting and it's the crime safety. I'm not going to get the group name right, but they are consultants and they are analyzing our police department's data and they are, they they deal with data all the time. And I can get you the information. So anyway, these are calls. Gosh, I'm really sorry.
That's the total calls, right?
Yeah, percent of total calls. And so these are locations. So, for example, the Quality Inn is north of the Roundabout. There are a fair amount of people living north of the Roundabout. We have no sidewalks there. We have no great amenities or these areas. Like, I I see that this could inform that not what our safety response is. You know, it's the two things, it's the revenue sharing, what are, what are the amenities there?
A lot of the calls, a lot of the calls that you can see are associated with where we're housing the unhoused. I'll say it.
What's the timeframe of this information?
I believe.
Twenty two to twenty four, right?
Yeah, twenty two, I think, to twenty four.
Would it be worth bringing the pre and post twenty twenty realization that we, okay?
Oh, you can, yeah.
Oh, sure. Okay, so it didn't make it into this particular presentation, but we had taken a look in sort of that same exploratory data analysis type mindset that John was talking about at all of the reported crimes that the all the cases that the Brattleboro Police Department reported to the FBI as part of their uniform reporting that that virtually all police departments seem to do. And took a look at nineteen ninety through two thousand nineteen and then twenty twenty through now and compared a variety of things, but what particularly jumped off the page was that looking at simple assault from those first thirty years, hotel and motel as a location for where that is being reported was less than five percent, just under of all of the cases. And then for the past four years, it's been more than a quarter of those cases. So that was approximately a five hundred percent increase. So it it seems pretty likely causative. Sure, yeah. So this is similarly more economic data that's it's mostly just telling a story of what has the recent past and the present look like in terms of our local economy? Uh, so here we've just got a handful of major sectors within the the town's economy as as far as the number of employees in each of those. That's the top line there. I I see that this probably isn't big enough for me. That is the healthcare sector. So it starts at number one and it it does dip slightly over the course of, this is going from the first quarter of twenty eighteen through the last quarter of twenty twenty three. And I believe that that would overlap a bit with the time that we had published the previous town plan, but basically it's pretty much exclusively covering the time since that we finished our last town plan. So you can see that that dips a bit, but remains the the largest employment by sector. Then we've got the truck transportation utilities. Manufacturing is the the third line you see there with a fairly significant decline in the overall employment. Uh, then it's the government at all three levels that you'd see in town.
Leisure, kind of slight incline, right? Slight gain, it looks like.
Very slight, but yeah. Going from about eleven hundred to about twelve hundred. Uh, and then leisure and hospitality where you can see that COVID dip, which it hasn't fully recovered in numbers. Uh, and these are adjusted as far as seasonality, so that the actual trend is easier to see. So this is taking a moving average of quarters. Uh, so the actual raw data would be more peaks and valleys, but this is the overall trend line. Uh, then you can see finally it's professional services, education, construction and arts and entertainment. Those all stay relatively flat, although education has seen overall trend has been a dip and construction has seen an overall increase. But it does seem like in the more recent past of maybe the last five, six quarters, education has been picking back up.
So again, thank, you know, this is the state of Brattleboro. Some of the stuff is going to be aha. Some of the stuff that could be, oh, well, that makes sense, right? But it's useful, I think, to see the data. Obviously, I think we probably all see, know that healthcare is an important part of employment in in the Brattleboro area.
So no major changes, nothing's really leapfrogging anything.
And as the population ages here, healthcare probably become even more important, right?
Question about employment. If this is compared or cross-referenced with like percent, how do I say it? Like the total positions in each of those fields, including like available positions, such that the difference might show positions that aren't being filled? And I wonder if that would I wonder if that would be informative.
Like open jobs?
For any actions. I mean, I guess the only thing that comes to mind is when people say like, oh, there's a bunch of jobs available in this industry and but people can't find housing, so they they're not being filled.
People, we need to look outside of the data set that we use for this specifically. It it's possible that we might be able to put that together, but we would need to take a look into whether we can.
Yeah, besides that one implication, nothing else is coming to me right now, but maybe it will to someone else. Like if, if for one of them, if for one of the fields, if if there's as many, just pretty much as many employees as total, including, you know, what's available positions and so meaning there's very little, you don't call it vacancy, but.
No, open jobs, kind of.
Open jobs, yeah. There's, there's in one industry, there's no open jobs, but in in another, there's half of the jobs are open. I feel like maybe that would have implications, like maybe the one that has all the jobs filled would mean like, hey, this is a growth potential in Brattleboro. If we allow for, like, if a hundred percent of the construction jobs are filled and we and we want to just have a general goal of more jobs in Brattleboro, then we should maybe permit more, more construction businesses to be developed.
I I absolutely agree with you. I think a lot of times, though, what I've seen as an outsider coming down to this is a lot of it comes down to how creative Steve can be with the data. Because he's got to dig into the data, he's got to slice and dice it different ways, you know, and sometimes it's just frankly not available. Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, would you?
Yeah, we were just talking about that. I was like, we're not sure.
We're, yeah, we're not entirely sure. And I think there are potentially some interesting, like, private data sets that we might be able to get access to through V D C C. The census, I believe, has something sort of similar to what you were asking about, but the the resolution of it, so to speak, uh, whether it actually covers a town versus the county or even just the state and how frequently and to what level of specificity it's it's unlikely it would be this level, but there might be something that we could find.
Yeah, I guess it simply is just what's the amount or percentage of open jobs per industry? And then decisions could be made. Or there could be implications made from that.
I'm just curious, I found the closing of V Y was reflected in this study. And how that, oh, is that something coming up?
That would be a few years prior to when this.
Oh, okay.
I I do know.
Thank you.
I don't know if it was the sense that we were seeing, there was a publication at the recent Southern Vermont Economy Conference where there was a pretty eye-opening clam in there with with data that we have just almost managed to recover the overall size of the economy that we had at the time that V Y was closed after about nine years. Uh, so that, yeah, I'm sure that looks like a major change if if we were to backdate a bit. Uh, so we have a few similar charts here where we had compared Brattleboro, which will be the red line in both of them, uh, with a few similar communities, at at least just in size, which would be Hartford, Bennington and Rutland. And these are taking the meals, rooms and sales tax variously. Those return numbers from the state and comparing them. And these are inflation adjusted and the seasonality is also smooth for the the moving average in the same way that that we did in the previous.
One of the big gaps is is that we don't have a ton of data on tourism. So again, this is a lot of work that Steve's done trying to get some estimate of how tourism is trending over time.
So I think the the punchline here is that compared to two towns that are actually larger than us by population, uh, which are the two lines below us, Bennington and Rutland. We started with overall, not not even per capita, just overall more rooms, tax, revenue. And we finished with more, although it does seem like Bennington is substantially closer to us uh, now in revenue, uh, while staying flat. So we've actually almost recovered to the same amount post-COVID, but then have seen a dip since then. Uh, whereas Hartford seems to have had the the biggest boomerang from COVID. And so they don't seem particularly like us in general.
So it also seems like since the since the 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 COVID, COVID, the the room tax revenue has declined. Perhaps showing that that we're not getting as many people coming back after the people started traveling again.
Possibly. We're we're seeing, so again, these are inflation adjusted, so it's it's in constant value, so you can compare at any point across that line. Uh, and it's the same dollar amount. Uh, so we are in real terms seeing almost a million dollars less per quarter in uh, tax revenue from that than we were at the beginning of the cell.
See Lindsay's hand up?
This tax applies to like when you go out to eat and stuff too, like even though you put rooms at the top, does this mean rooms and meals?
This is just the rooms part. We do have the the meals data. I can't recall if that's the next slide or if sales tax is the next slide.
Okay.
Okay, it is. Okay, yeah, so they broke that out. They also had alcohol sales tax. We didn't include that here, but we have that data if it's of of interest. Uh, so this is the meals tax revenue, um, which, again, all four towns have a pretty similar general shape to them. Our COVID decline actually seems to have been slower and later a little bit than the rest of them. I don't think that's super relevant now, but just an interesting difference in the shape there.
And then meals tax is also muddled a bit by the fact that this would include locals eating out as well, like not just tourism related stuff.
Yeah, you mean, you don't get to do the tax exemption when you go to the restaurants?
I wish I did.
I guess, no, just kidding, I don't.
This is just, yeah, all all meals tax, which the town collects. But it seems like it's another situation where we were very close to Rutland at the beginning of this series. And now it's the gap is a bit larger. So in real terms, it's it's also down, although well, I suppose, yeah, that is about also more or less exactly a million dollars per quarter difference between the start and the end there of those five years. And this is gonna be.
Hold on, can we, can we just quickly go back to your, I I think there's potentially many implications or at least guesses of implications one could have from this or like causes. Besides the COVID drop, I think we're all on board with that being a cause, but like right in the in this this slide and the other side, things rebounded pretty well right after COVID, but then maybe they're they're not continuing growth like we expect, you know, generally expected growth ever since World War Two, right, economically? Um, I know our population's not increasing here, but um, but it there's generally been a leveling off or a decline, and I wonder if like, I mean, it's a real, maybe vague stretch, but like just some sort of social wellbeing sort of implications can be drawn from these two things, like people are less.
Maybe they have less disposable income.
Yeah, less disposable, yeah, so an indication of economy or. Yeah, some people talk about how COVID made people like more isolated or less social. And so, of course, it rebounded when the restrictions went down, so. more isolated or less social. And so, of course, it rebounded when the restrictions went down. So, you know, it could be a mix, it could be hard to say authoritatively anything, but there are potential causes and then you know, trend, you know, trends that could be derived from these, but.
I mean, ultimately, I think that's one of the reasons you put this data up, right, is because then you get people in a room and they start looking at it and they go, oh, I wonder if it means this, or I wonder if it means that, maybe we should dig here, maybe we should dig there. Not all of it's going to be worth the time, but it's interesting, right?
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of these, I think, really reflect your observation there that there seemed to be a lot of demand that was pent up from having to be isolated. And then after that sort of normalized, it definitely dipped back down and the the new level that it eventually came to is a bit lower in both cases than it was previously. And yet we we have the same amount of people, actually a little bit more.
Yeah, so it would be interesting to know, I mean, this is basically like a snapshot of COVID. You know, before COVID, during and after is how I kind of view it. So it'd be interesting to know, like, if it's more data defined, but a few years before it to see if like in normal times, right, there's always something that causes something to be not normal, but COVID seems like a big one for the economy and and whatnot and public health. But like, were things on the upswing for a while? And then COVID lowered them. But I'll let the data team figure out if they want to delve into that or not.
Really, I think all this stuff is really good. I mean, that's part of the reason we're putting it up is that the planning commissioner look at it and say, well, I wonder what this means, I wonder what that means.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think the reason why we've generally gone with twenty eighteen is, and I'm I'm in full agreement with you, is that you have to cut it somewhere, I suppose, or you could show the entire data set that you can find, I suppose, is the other option. But we've generally cut it to what coincides with what's happened since the last.
Oh, right, right.
But I do think it's a good point because if for any reason Q one twenty eighteen is abnormal for some reason,
Normally high.
Then we miss that context and we might read the wrong story from what we're seeing.
Yeah, right.
Let's see that next. Let's see that next chart.
So these are probably going to look scary or like maybe modern art of the subway station, but what this represents is, I think, a more applied understanding of how the economy is in Brattleboro, because oftentimes we're talking about it as if it's a singular whole thing and really the economy is experienced differently by different kinds of people. And to actually apply that data to something that's meaningful and something that everybody can feel because they experience it. We've taken the actual ratio of what people are earning in these particular industries in just Brattleboro and compared it to what the cost of the median home is to purchase just in Brattleboro at any of these points in time. And so we've got the same general sectors as as you saw previously, there are a couple of additions. So at the top, it's healthcare and social assistance, then it's finance and insurance, then it's education, then it's arts, entertainment and recreation, then it's accommodation and food service, then it's trade, transportation and utilities, which is mostly talking about truck transportation and shipping as well as utilities. Then professional and business services, then manufacturing, then leisure and hospitality, and then the last two are construction and government. And that's again, local, federal and state employees in town. So the greens are what's generally considered to be an affordable house price, which is that the cost to buy the house is no more than three times the salary of that person or people who are in the median person in that industry. The yellows are things that are unaffordable, but not yet severely unaffordable, which is to say that they are either triple or six times, they're between triple and six times the the salary of people in this particular fields. And then the red is things that are extremely unaffordable, which is above six times the salary that the median person in that industry makes. So you can see there is some well, significant differences between different sectors within town. I don't think it's incredibly surprising per se that some of them are seeing affordability almost all the time, and some of them are seeing extreme unaffordability in some cases the entire time. But there are some that go in and out of affordability or unaffordability. So it it does, I think, give a snapshot of what the experience of different kinds of people in town is like, and maybe offers some suggestions on or ways to understand how we might target some of our policy choices towards housing or economic growth.
I mean, the need for affordable housing in Brattleboro certainly is not a surprise to anyone, right? But if you wanted to start cutting the data in a more delicate slice, if you will, you could start comparing, for example, where the jobs growth is for Brattleboro, which was the first or second slide, I think. And then look at where affordability is with that, those particular job sectors, right? So if you're growing healthcare and you and healthcare is wildly unaffordable at the salary ranges for home care, I mean, you have an even more important, you have an even more significant issue now. I mean, again, lots of people are working on affordable housing, but but I think it's useful data. And if you're going to start subsidies, for example, you that you know where you want to start the subsidies, right? You probably want to subsidize where the jobs are needed first.
Yeah, I like your connection of that previous industry based graph slide to this one. I can see how they can they can inform each other.
It's easy to say, okay, we all need affordable housing, but this starts to pinpoint exactly where the specific issues are, right? The job growth is in areas that are particularly unaffordable, so.
We could even try to do a regression on, is there a serious correlation between job growth and housing unaffordability or the wage growth? Because I I think there's there's not a strong correlation, just anecdotally from looking at the the data itself between what sectors are actually growing by employment numbers and or or even by numbers of firms versus the actual wage change, because that that could be a nice slide to see as well in the future is the actual real income churned over time for those industries as well. It's generally been stagnant for most things. So that's regardless of of the change in overall employment. Although arts has seen a fairly significant increase in their wage, which was quite low at the beginning of this set and became more livable, although still relatively low by the end of of this data set.
Lindsay.
Yeah, Lindsay.
The most interesting thing to me about this is that education is losing ground more clearly than, I mean, because it actually that seems pretty clear to me, but otherwise, even though I think this is really interesting to look at, I'm not really sure how much it's telling us because the story it tells me is that Brattleboro has been unaffordable and continues to be unaffordable. Like, if you count up on the far left hand side to the far right hand side, there's actually one more affordable square than there is on the far left hand side, which would seem to indicate, oh, we're making some tiny headway, but clearly we're not making any real headway because we have a crisis. And I don't know, did it feel like a crisis in twenty eighteen? Why does it feel like a crisis today when it's been unaffordable for at least six years? I don't know if anyone, like, what is the difference?
I think that's a great question. But you know, I mean, the facts don't always match the the noise level, if you will, right? So maybe the facts are buried for a while, and then maybe the noise level rises and the facts become more obvious.
I mean, I think that in twenty eighteen, we were talking about the housing crisis and, you know, I think that vacancy rates were really low, particularly in the rental, which is going to be the next slide market. So I think that is probably when we were beginning to notice. I think you know, compared to other states, Vermont and, you know, even, you know, at a town level and at the regional level, we've been behind on really bringing attention to it. I think in a meaningful way, having housing plans, having, you know, Massachusetts has done a lot more and had had statute, I think, you know, in Vermont, that really wasn't happening.
I think it's also worth considering that whether or not it's being framed as a crisis or like an immediate emergency to be dealt with right now. It it it's true that the general trend has been here for quite some time, if not, you know, over fifty years potentially, that that large portions of our town have a difficult time actually having a decent quality of life as it comes to affording things like housing. So we've definitely seen a lot of awareness building and consensus building around the idea that maybe that's not the norm that we should just tolerate and accept anymore. But certainly the actual change in real terms of people's lives improving in that regard. It takes a while to see the the game actually happen after housing, well, after zoning changes allows for the housing and then the housing gets built, there is a significant lag.
I have a question, and again, if you think it's ridiculous, I want to know that. So I look at, for example, professional and business services. And it's mostly green. Does that mean that I could theoretically encourage the growth of jobs in business and professional services?
I'd say maybe maybe it would be smart to, if they allowed entry level jobs, and then people could you know, upgrade their income from leisure and hospitality in towns.
People to move here who have business and professional services jobs. Now, again, this is all kind of hypothetical and and not even necessarily practical, but to me, that's the kind of thinking I would do with this data. I would say, well, if I can afford it in business professional services, then maybe I should encourage an environment that I grow business and professional services. Now, how would I encourage an environment that grows business and professional services?
I think that that's called gentrification. So we would have to decide whether that's what we wanted to do as a community.
Yes, thank you for that. And I think that's a, I think that's a wonderful discussion to have in terms of one of these tension discussions. Because we could be poor and honorable, or we could be gentrified and not broke. And I know I'm exaggerating that, but there are, that could be phrased in a way that creates a more productive conversation about the tension between the two.
One thing that we could do on the data side to also dig into that a bit is to take a look at those. I know we had looked in previous discussions that that we've had with us at the county level data with the same data set where the location quotient was already reported by by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, which gives a sense of what is the relative size of an industry in our economy as compared to the whole US to see what is about the same as it is in the nation and what's significantly larger as a proportion and what's significantly smaller as a proportion. So if we saw that, for instance, if it was the case that that we had a very low location quotient for one of these relatively affluent or at least making a decent living kind of sectors, then then maybe that would be a reasonable place to try to actually target some growth because it might suggest that we've got actual, I guess, room to to grow or or even a a cap. And we might be missing economic growth because we're not actually adequately staffed in that regard.
Just real quickly, I just, first of all, want to apologize for my snarky comment about gentrification, but I do think it it does create a very interesting tension question that how much, if any, gentrification do we want to create a sustainable community? So I'll rephrase it in a more positive, hopefully helpful sense. Because there are jobs, obviously, that can afford the homes here.
And this is, I guess, it's important to mention that it's the median compared to the median. So these things could be significant in their distribution, or they could even be bimodal or multimodal, which is to say that you could have half of the people in, say, financial insurance, making an extremely high amount of money and half of them making virtually zero dollars. So it could be that we're seeing a median that isn't actually representative of the whole. I don't think that we can get access to the full data to know.
I mean, let's also be honest with ourselves. If you talk to somebody from Cambridge, you talk to somebody from Boston, you talk to somebody from any metro area, they look at the home prices here and it's like heaven to them, right? So again, it really does come down, in my opinion, to how do you balance this sort of growth gentrification versus making it available to all? Again, I'm not going to phrase it right, but better people than I could do that.
Yeah, I I mean, I just add my two cents on this conversation, if you don't mind, John. Sorry, I didn't just jump in. I don't view this as looking at targeting certain industries. I think our conversation with BDCC indicated that's, you know, not the way they necessarily do their economic development and cultivating. They need to be flexible, and that's just the matter of rural economic development. But I'm probably more along the lines of, wow, housing is really unaffordable to so many. So how do we how do we keep on doing the work that we've been doing to set the stage? And and you know, to make it more affordable. And I think to your point, John, even the people that come here from more metro areas, they found, they find that it's actually not that cheap here. The housing might be cheap to them, but the cost of living is actually not cheap here.
No, I would agree with that, but I also would agree that I I mean, and again, now we're having a, now we're having an opinion discussion, if you will, but I would also agree that if you keep driving and housing costs down so that people can afford it, there's still going to be low on disposable income, which has other impacts on the community like, you know, businesses, retail, restaurants and and all the rest. And we can see that effect. I excuse me, I believe I can see that effect in some of the restaurants that are closing. You talk to restaurant owners and they're having a very difficult time making it because they they're not getting, you know, enough people to keep the places open and all the rest. So there there's a there's a lot of effects beyond simply driving as much low cost housing as possible. And obviously, I have an opinion on that. I apologize for not expressing it right.
Are all those same industries on that graph, or there's a few more industries here than on that graph?
There are a few more, yeah. And and in the interest of transparency and honesty and in data visualization, these are not equally sized sectors.
Right, that's why I brought that up.
Presented as as nice, even nicely sized.
Let's move to the round and see what the round ones looks.
Yeah, I agree.
Basically, I would just say to caution against seeing this as, this is how much of the local economy is experiencing this level of affordability issues. These are mostly the biggest sectors with arts specifically put in because it was mentioned in the town plan, but it's not actually particularly large in terms of employment, but it's not fully like, these aren't, you know.
Interesting, how much did that till it's green? When it gets to it.
Yeah, this is a two bedroom apartment. And the ratios here are slightly different, but this is, again, using the sort of industry standard that I think many of you have likely seen already, which is rent is considered affordable when, but really housing costs in total, but this is just rent. They're considered affordable when they are no more than thirty percent of your monthly income. And so that's represented here in green and unaffordable is is when your rent is higher than thirty percent or your housing costs rather higher. Unaffordable is, is when your rent is higher than thirty percent or your housing costs rather higher than thirty percent of your monthly income, but they don't exceed fifty percent. And the red here is that severe unaffordability. Which is when your housing costs are taking up at least half of your monthly income. And so this is a two bedroom apartment. Uh, we were hearing a lot of demand for that in the. Housing Action Plan, which is, uh, part of the reason why we went for this. Uh, I think it's also an interesting way of, uh, getting more out of the comparison than if we went with a studio or a, a one bedroom. Um, which might look a little bit rosier than even this does. But it's, uh, it's, I think, worth taking a look at when, yes, we do typically see two person households on average at this point. And, and we've had a declining, uh, household size for quite some time now, but if you are, say, a, uh. Single parent or a, a, a family with kids that, uh, has one income. And you need two bedrooms and you need to rent, this is what it looks like for you. Uh, so that's.
This is such interesting data. Look at the sectors that afford, that struggle to afford rental housing. Mm hmm. Right? I mean, they're not necessarily surprise sectors, but they probably constitute a relatively large portion. A meaningful, let's call it a meaningful proportion of employment in Brattleboro.
Sure. Accommodation and food service, for instance, if it was included on that first graph would actually be larger than, uh, the hospitals. In total, healthcare. So I think it's the single largest.
Yeah. Lindsay, what do you have to say?
So what I get from this, based on our housing, uh, report is that. The apartments may be affordable if you have a job, but if there are no apartments, then it doesn't matter. If they're affordable or not, because you're not living in one. So if you have the money, but there's no place to rent. Then it's. Doesn't matter to you. You're not having a house to live in.
So, so Lindsay, that's a really interesting point. Would you then recommend, if you're going to build apartments, to require building income restricted apartments? Or allow apartments to be built at market rate?
Well, I, I think we need both. Um. I, I come from a very different background, having worked in New Jersey and affordable housing, and New Jersey has a very different. And special and wonderful system for providing affordable housing that I don't believe any other state in the country has. Um, and so I, I think that Brattleboro has housing that needs to be built, including affordable housing. But actually, I would say that my bigger concern is that surrounding towns and localities are not taking on their fair share. Of housing the population, including people who need housing that is affordable.
Hmm. Yeah, that's a really interesting comment.
And we don't, to the best of my knowledge, have a very good mechanism in Vermont for making sure that every municipality takes on their fair share of providing housing.
That's what I was listening to earlier in Massachusetts where they do have requirements, um, for that. We don't have anything like that in place in Vermont. And, and frankly, um, under fair housing, we can't, we can't require.
Related to like the M expansion where they're requiring towns to build.
What expansion?
The, the M expansion in, in Mass where they're requiring towns to build affordable housing close to the M lines, if they expand the M line.
I heard of that.
I think it's.
Forty B is that one. Um, that, that's part of it.
Well, I don't want to digress. I think it's a great point. I don't want to diffuse the point. It's an excellent point. It's a really interesting point.
At first I was having the thought, and we're not necessarily getting into implications now, but I'll just quickly say that. Um, it being a housing crisis, right? And a lot of people struggling with that, um. It seems like, and if they have a job, uh, in one of these industries that we see, it seems like it's more affordable to rent than to own a house. So we could potentially have a land use reg implication that, that promotes. Or encourages or allows or permits apartment buildings more so than single family housing. Um, and we are moving in that direction, but, but then partially I think like, oh, well, maybe the flip side is that there's a dearth of single family housing. And if there was more of that, then it will bring more of that to the green because of the competition, more supply. So you could go either way on it, or you could go both ways and say that it would help.
No, I really, it's a really interesting discussion, really interesting data.
Generally, the rent, uh, metric here is seen as, uh, among the housing economists, at least that I've kept up with. Uh, is seen as a much more useful sense of what's actually the day to day affordability. Uh, than, than housing sale price, which has got a lot of other things going into it.
Okay.
It's not really real economically. There's a lot of reasons why it's.
Speculation investment.
Yeah, which is not to say that it's not also a unique, specific problem, but I think we're, we're looking at two different. Ways that the housing, uh, market is. Affecting our local community. And so different strategies might be useful for, for addressing both of those things. But, uh, I think Bonnie had a hand up.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, I don't understand that. Um, I've always owned because I felt like it was. More affordable to own. And if you can afford to buy, because you might have a little bit of money to put down. Um, the, your mortgage payment would be definitely lower than your rent. Um, and it's also, you have, you're building up some equity and some value. I mean. I don't, I think it's very challenging. I would encourage people to buy and support people and getting some money to put down, um. So they could buy, even if it's, you know, a, a condo, an apartment, uh, whatever, because. They're building up equity, they're building up, um. And then they could sell and they could make some money. My place that I bought here nine years ago, it's over doubled. Uh, in, in value.
Mm hmm.
And so, and that's how I've always lived like that. Um, I've always paid. Not that much for a farm and then sold it for a lot more and. And I know, and I'm, I'm a little bit privileged, but I'm not massively privileged. I grew up very poor. Um, I lived homeless for a while, so I understand all these different aspects, but, um. I wouldn't, I would not personally encourage renting over buying. If, that's me.
I think it's, uh, it is a good point to clarify that, uh. We, we are comparing, yeah, the, the cost of the house to buy upfront, um, or like the sticker price of the house. So. There is data, um, and we could take a look at it, the actual cost of homeownership. Quarterly to people in this town and compare that to the, the rent. Cause I, I think that from what I've seen, um. Haven't checked recently, but in the not so distant past, it definitely, uh, agrees with, with, what you're saying, that it's a lot lower than. The median rent.
So if I wanted to use this data, the slide in the previous slide. And I wanted to use it on a, let's call it a, a regional basis, because I really like Lindsay's point about also making. Surrounding towns do their part in terms of low cost housing, affordable housing. Then what would you take away from, what would you take away from this in terms of where to apply your efforts? Where to apply your town's money? Is it to, uh, create affordable, purchasable housing? Is it to create affordable rental housing? Is it to create market rate affordable housing? I mean, draw some conclusions, whatever conclusions you can from these two slides of data.
I don't want to get put on the spot like that anymore with it. And I don't think that I can draw those conclusions from these, actually.
What are we doing today then? What, what's our targeting for affordable housing? Is it any particular kind, or is it just, let's, let's find as many opportunities as we can?
We need all types of housing in this community. We need homeownership. We need rental. Um, we don't have a good housing supply. Um. Yeah, I, I mean, that's, I, I honestly believe we need the market rate housing. We need affordable housing.
Yeah, I think we're talking about the lowercase A affordable housing, so to speak, when we, when we're using that term, um, which can include.
Can include.
Capital A, uh, so to speak, which is actually subsidized or, or income restricted, but, uh, that's not a lever that we. Have to pull and it wouldn't be legal for us to try.
So the units that we were discussing at the beginning of the meeting, that, that may go five to an acre. Um. One, I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, one, I'm hearing, you don't have any ability to legally influence them, what they want to do, other than the fact that they need to build five to an acre. Is that correct?
They can build five to an acre.
Well, sorry, they can build five to an acre if they get the development funds for it. So then it comes there, the decision on what type of housing that is comes down to. How the numbers pencil out for them presumably.
Yeah.
And to.
Yeah, and to.
The building standards and the, the use table for the district that, that it's at.
Have to make sure there's time for, uh, Lindsay's agenda item, which is the next one, at least, um, but if there's anything to finish up with this one. Anyone say your piece? Okay. Yeah, the next agenda item is something, um, Lindsay, um, suggested. Uh, I think it's a good idea. Um, no supporting doc for that, so it's, I think she's introducing it orally here. Um, totally fine, in my opinion. Um. So Lindsay, why don't you take it away?
Um, I just wanted to put forward the idea of, um, sending letters to property owners affected by changes to the land use regulations. In the past couple of years, especially the regulations that have increased density or allowed for some. New uses, especially related to housing and also the same idea towards property owners on the Putney Road Service Center Zone. Um, specifically regarding housing development being allowed in their zone and multiple uses being allowed on the same parcel. Um. There's, um. A fair number of, uh, parcels along in the Putney Road Service Center that, in my opinion, look kind of underutilized. So maybe if there were an opportunity to make money, they would be interested in expanding housing. There. And then with the more sort of. Local individual homeowner type property owners with the changes to the land use regulations. I'm not sure that everyone knows, and I. Think a lot of people, even if they heard about the changes, wouldn't necessarily know what zone they were in and whether they applied to them. So it might be beneficial to let them. Know that something has changed so that they could consider whether they want to take advantage of that change or not. Um. And so I was sort of putting forward the idea to, um. Uh, draft a letter, um, that I could draft a letter to folks, um, letting them know about this and, um. Uh, then the question becomes, um, how do we ID those property owners? And whether staff is able to help with that or not, or whether commissioners need to do that on their own.
And would it be only the properties that zoning has changed, or would it be sort of an update reminder for all property owners? Just the properties where zoning has changed?
Yeah.
So, um. We can definitely help. You know, with the mailing and identifying the properties. Are you, for example. You know, we have the RN fifty four, well, we had the RN and then it split into the RN thirty six where. You know, are, are you thinking all the property owners in that district? All the property owners in the RN, because they both kind of changed and we have that missing little housing overlay. So I'm just trying to. It could be a rather really large mailing.
I think that we should start where we see the most possibility. So if you think that there is a district in which lies the most possibility, then we should start there. Or if you think that, like, I don't know your, um, GIS and mapping system very well, but if, for example, there was a change where. You know, only parcels over half an acre would be impacted, but the impact were great, then singling out. Those parcels, doing, you know, a guided search on those and just starting. I don't think that this is something that needs to be all done in one singular, like mailing. I think it's more like a batch idea that. Target certain groups. And go from there.
I think that's good that that was brought up to try to focus on the, the most impacted because even if. You know, how many parcels are there in town? Like three thousand or something, let's say?
About six thousand.
Six thousand. And some of them maybe weren't affected at all, like in the rural, rural district, let's say, um. Uh, some were affected in other districts in ways that aren't housing. So we're probably just going to limit this to housing maybe, but, but maybe not. Um, uh. And then there's all sorts of different ways they're affected by housing. So it's not like we're going to send the same letter out to all the affected people, right? So I think that is a good call to, to try to start, start with something.
Yeah, I, I think that it's good to start with something, and I also actually think that probably a lot of people. Will get the same letter and that letter will be more like, here are some changes that have happened recently. We're sending you this letter because. More of these changes might apply to you. Please get in touch if you're interested in more information or, you know, here's where you can find the land use document and read more about. This sort of thing, and then you could follow up with us. Not like, I mean, I'm definitely not proposing sending an individual letter to each. Person, because I think that would be overkill. I also think that it might make the most sense to start with the Putney Road Service. Because that's, those are big parcels and it's a relatively small zone.
Yeah, I, I was going to suggest that we start there too. And, you know, the Housing Coalition, the. Southeastern Vermont Housing Coalition has put together some resources too. So there on our webpage, we can direct. You know, whether you want to get involved with the accessory dwelling units, Vermont Housing, um, Improvement Program. You know, where you can find some funding for the small scale stuff.
Hmm.
That we could direct them to.
I like that.
I think it's a great idea too, but I'm just wondering, is, is the target then to get things like ADUs, or is it a target to get people with empty properties that could be developed into multi units?
It's both.
Both, okay.
So, uh, it seems quite relevant to this, so, um, but, but pardon me if it's not, uh. I think what could potentially help actually bring this to folks as well as, um. And I, I would need to get the departmental blessing and probably run it through the town, uh, attorney as well, but. Uh, I do have a currently fully functional interactive map of every parcel in the town based on what is permissible by zoning. In terms of housing and what state and local overlay districts impacted as well. Uh, that we could either include, uh, a URL in the, um. Letter that we send out or, uh, post on our, our town website and. You know, perhaps in a less targeted way, let folks know that that's there and they could self-serve.
Sounds very simple to me. And Lindsay, if you're going to draft the letter, then. If you feel like including that and, and bringing it back to us, I think that'd be great.
Okay.
Our review, um. Do we, do we have emails of people? You know, parcel owners? No, it's, it's the nineteen, mid nineteen hundreds.
If they have submitted.
If they've submitted, yeah, but it'd be.
In the last, like. Eleven, twelve years, I think we would have records that, that would potentially have an email. Not sure it actually lets you submit without putting something in the email box, so.
Are, are you suggesting if we have like a zoning permit?
Applications.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't think townwide, like, you know, Grand List has emails and that kind of thing.
I wish, I wish the records would start moving more towards that than, than snail mail in some ways. Um.
Yeah, yeah.
One thing I've thought too, kind of related is that I think in some towns, when someone buys a property, maybe if it's a certain type of property, like a single family, they got like a welcome. Mail letter from the town government. And, you know, that's a whole nother project, but. Could have, hey, here's some rules that apply to you now that you live here. Um, in addition to all sorts of other things that have to do with the town and town government.
Uh, BDCC has some sort of welcome wagon project that I don't know what it entails, but they have something that's titled that.
That's for people to socialize and whatnot, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think they're looking at property transactions, but yeah.
If there's some way to tap into, uh, their knowledge on how they're doing that, if, if there was an interest in actually communicating to, to new folks.
I think that'd be good and for all realms, you know, public safety and with the.
Welcome.
I'm, no, I'm just saying, just all, all elements. I'm, no, I'm just saying just all, all elements of town government, you know. So when the select board has a dull moment, maybe they can consider that with a town manager's proposal. Anywho, um, what was the thing? I think it might be like polite or considerate to just have a, like a general electronic notice too, just for the, everybody, for the whole town to say, you know, even though this land use regs, we had public hearings and we had a public thing, you know, something like, hey, here's an update, you know, we're sending out these letters because it's a housing crisis and we feel certain areas would be more impactful than others and we have limited time capacity. We're going to focus on certain areas, but here's a, you know, just general notice for the whole town.
Are you suggesting like an article, a press release?
I guess so.
E-newsletter, all of it?
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, not, not with any of these specifics necessarily, but just so that we know in the town who we're not going to get to with these letters feels like, hey, I heard someone got letters and I didn't get anything. There'll be at least some explanation and.
Well, I had offered to do something like that too. So, I mean, I could draft something that as like the planning commission, we could submit to the newspapers as, you know.
I think a lot of the language, I mean, not a lot, but a significant amount would be the same in both, both, both arms of the project.
I think an announcement would be more effective in that general sense than a targeted email, because lots of times the targeted email, when you send it out, it has to be very relevant. So.
I wasn't even saying a targeted email. I mean, I, I mean, announcement.
Yeah, that's true.
That's what I mean, in whatever way that is, a reformer article or, or multiple ways.
That'd be great.
You know? Yeah, I think it's great. Thanks for bringing, you know, are, are we all in agreement to, you know, to have Lindsay be point person for this?
Yeah.
Okay, it's a great idea. Okay, great.
Thanks, Lindsay. And I think, um, yes, we made the missing middle housing overlay last year and we're beginning to see permits being issued for that. So that's pretty exciting. Our numbers are up.
Here's a data point for everyone. Best year in housing permitting since nineteen eighty-nine.
Wow.
That's year-to-date, so there's still.
Yeah, there's still.
Two and a half, three months.
You two are personally responsible. Give yourselves a pat on the back.
All of you as well.
Good job.
I guess so. Just quickly, an update on the downtown bike parking, uh, project. Basically, the update is that there's almost no update. You all saw the memo, right? And, uh, just had some communications with, um, with BCAT and they connected me to Local Motion, who, um, I think it may be someone who replaced Jonathan Weber's position, but, or maybe someone just in a different position in that organization, but they're going to look into their resources and find some general standards and characteristics of what, you know, may indicate good downtown bike parking, you know, locations, designs, which, you know, some of these things we've already seen, but they're not going to be specific to, you know, there are going to be development regulations like we saw earlier. And, uh, Sue, um, got me in contact, uh, with someone at the Wyndham Regional Commission and, um, they have been updating the, or they have been taking the, the bicycle parking inventory data each month, actually, I think, if I understood that correctly, ever since two thousand twenty-one. Um, remember that document was twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one. Um, it just hasn't been updated. And they said that they would get on updating it if that would be helpful. So I had some requests and it seems like they, um, have quite some knowledge and experience and perspective on bicycling, so they may have things to contribute. Beyond that, it's just been, you know, send an email, wait a week. I get the response, then I take a week to respond. So, and that's been the one. So, um, yeah, if there's any feedback, uh, based off the memo or what I said now, I'll receive it, but otherwise.
Keep it up. Good job.
Luckily, no one's saying we have a downtown bike parking crisis, so it doesn't feel as urgent. Although it may be in some people's minds. Um, let's open the public comment period. There's no one else hiding on Zoom, is there? Okay, no one in the room here. Close that public comment period. And we finished all our business, I believe, so I will adjourn the meeting unless there's anything else necessary to say. Okay, meeting adjourned.